I'll call the work session to order. Thank you for being here this evening and welcome to our session for the June 24th Commission meeting. I would confirm with commissioners that Mr. Belcher will be responsible for the invocation and Ms. Atwood will be responsible for the place of the flag. Of course, Ms. Crowder will be doing roll call. We'll have approval of the minutes. I'm going to move right along. Then one announcement that will be made, but also needs to be brought to your attention tonight. Mr. Johnson has fallen, is in had a head injury and he's in Galton Hospital at the current time. So if you get a chance to stop by and see him or send him.
He's back.
Okay, he's back in Hartsville, I'm told. Hello, Mr. Bass. Welcome to work session. We're glad to have you. We'll be calling on you here shortly. The Election Commission Office is holding an open house. Is that this Thursday? It is, isn't it? This Thursday, June 20th, during regular office hours to show off their new office setup. Be sure to make a note of that. On Monday night when we set the agenda, we'll be adding Resolution 2024-12809 for a transfer of vehicle from rescue to fire. There'll also be some budget ordinances pending. We'll be adding ordinance 306-202406, general tax rate, ordinance 307-202407, general appropriation, ordinance 308-202408, urban tax rate, and ordinance 309-202409, urban appropriation. And we will set that agenda on Monday night. We'll have citizens respond to any agenda items. I will try to bring as thorough a mayor's report to you as I can on Monday night with a new timeline on, on the completion of the playground. Rain has been a problem up until this week, but that delayed it, but we'll have a new timeline. We'll have committee reports and then get into active business. We will have some library board, library board reappointments. That would be on page seven of your package. There are three members up for a reappointment. Then we'll get into resolutions. Resolution 202408-805 is the county road list. That is a page 11 in your packet. Annual approval of the county maintained road list provided by the highway department. Any questions on that at this point? Am I moving too fast? The second resolution is 202409-806 for budget continuation. That's page 31 in your package. Are we on track? We are not on track to get this approved by the end of the month, are we, the budget? We, we are not on track to get this approved.
So we can go through a bit of those processes if you wish to, but the, the Finance Committee has recommended the full budget as the Finance Committee has gone through and made changes. That will be on Monday night's first reading. The final budget requires three readings. If in the, if, I don't know where things go, it's favorable from the commission, from the committee. If it goes favorable on Monday night, then that will be the first reading, moving on with the budget. The next would come up in the July meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Honorable Beller, but I believe it takes two-thirds supermajority. If we have a two-thirds supermajority vote positive for the budget in the July meeting, then we could do the third reading that night as well. If not, it would have to move into August. We do have a continuation of last year's budget in Monday night's resolution that just lets us continue our budget through, and we would still be okay in that August if we had to get to that point.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Under item three, Resolution 2024-10-807, nonprofit charitable organizations, that's appropriations to nonprofits and that'll be come before us. Number four, Resolution 2024-11-808, to accept the broadband ready grant, CCF, that's page 33 of your package. I know you received information on that this week and, and I'm certainly open to discussing that and answering any questions that anyone would have. When we applied for that original grant, it was a $2 million grant and it was understood there was a $200,000 match, a 10% match. When we received the budget figures put together by GNRC, there were some added items at the end which included architecture fees and some other fees which you have in your package, which increased the, the grant to 2 million 3. I don't, I don't have an exact number, but I can get it for you. And the grant writer chose for us to split those last fees which incre, which increased the amount from 200,000 to 313, which would increase the grant match from 10% to 14.6%. You have before you the budget and if anyone has any questions about that. I, I do have a representative from the Shalom Zone who will be coming Monday night to ask, answer any questions as to what they have done in that project. I would also bring before you information that Murray County received a similar grant and they're going to base their project off what Shalom Zone it did in, in Galton when they, when they did a conversion of that, that high scope. Mr. Gully, I'm sorry, I kept on.
Just a couple of clarification items on this piece. Who will the property, will the property be under the county's at that time? How is that going to take place during this grant?
It was, it was understood with the, the grant writer in the state of Tennessee that at some point in time, the county would have to be the owner of that property to receive the grant. It has been my intention from the very beginning, especially working with Shalom Zone, that once that project is completed, then it would be turned over to a 501(c)(3) to be managed.
Will that, will we have that in writing in place before we fund this piece?
I think we should because, I think we should because one of the fears that's been expressed to me is to, to bring that building up to speed and then walk away from it, which I think that needs to be included in writing, that, that once that project is finished, it would be transferred to a 501(c)(3) and managed by that nonprofit, which means it would be taken out of the county's hands and responsibility would not be the county's. I, I think, I think it's pointless to do all that work and it not be managed well and it be understood going forward that it be managed well.
This may be for Mr. Beller and I think this is a great project. I want to say that upfront, but I don't want to end up three years down the road, the project's done and the county is left to maintain that facility, which means hiring workers, maintaining those pieces and putting an extra load on some people. What, what contingencies do we have to ensure that even though we put it in writing, that it happens?
We can always have oversight and of course, you know, one of the things when you're dealing with the grants and the funding of those grants, just use your budget committee to do a report, just add an item on the agenda, make sure we have monthly reports, progress reports. That way we don't get caught behind in maybe some areas that we had before.
Additionally to that question, once the project's finished, we've gone through, handed it over, the key's done, the 501(c)(3) is signed off and they're under care of that project, what contingency do we have that they're going to maintain the property? Is there a way we can hold on to that maintaining of the property or? I, my, my, my fear, and I may not be getting this out well, is that the county ends up with another building, another roof and another piece that we're having to maintain and take care of. That is, that is my fear here.
You know, I, I think when, when Ms. Sullivan comes on Monday night to, to talk about how they run that one down there, they even received grants to fund the executive director's position. So that, that's how the 501(c)(3) would receive funds to do that. She is, she's very thorough. When I looked at their project, theirs is three phases and their gymnasium floor had been taken up. So their, their third phase is to bring their gym back. This building has a gym that's in great shape and our church has looked into building a new gymnasium and you're looking at like $2 million to build a new gymnasium. This floor is set and, and dry and has been for years and it, it would provide a, a real asset for the county, just the gym itself. When I applied for the original grant, I had to ask for a, a commercial kitchen because I think at some point in time a 501(c)(3) will be in a position to, to, to feed those in need, but the cost of the grant rose considerably and so we took that out, but I was told that in phase two, we could go for another grant to, to put in a commercial kitchen. So there's still tremendous opportunity with this facility.
I have a question.
Any other question? Yes.
Is there a 501(c)(3) already established? Is there already somebody in line to take this over and do this?
There is one already established, but in order to, to, to set it up to manage this facility, I think we'd have to go to a different one. I had that discussion with Mr. Whitaker this afternoon. There is some concern among the black community that they're losing their school and that they would want some representation on this 501(c)(3), which I think is, is proper, that they would have representation. But I, I think in order to manage the project after it's finished, it's very important that, that you have enough freedom to hire a top-notch executive director to run the facility. Does that make sense? You can't just, you can't just take someone who's not trained in that area to, because there will be a lot of moving parts with that. You're going to have a gymnasium, you're going to have, you're going to have incubators where small businesses can come in, you're going to have telemedicine, you're going to have rooms being rented on an ongoing basis, there, there, and you're going to have a museum that's going to be, have some upkeep. So there, there'll be a lot of, this is not a small undertaking. This, this will require a tremendous amount of work and, and a great project manager to make this happen. It, it's not, I'm not, I'm not fooled in the least as to, as, as the size of this project, but it, it could be a tremendous asset to this community and something of which we all could be proud. But again, I would, I would challenge you to go to the website, Galton Shalom Zone and see for yourself what's going on down there and the potential that this building would have. And you'll be impressed with Ms. Sullivan when she comes on Monday night. She, she'll field any questions that you'd have. I think it's very important that we go into this with our eyes wide open and, and to have all our questions answered before we, before we approve it.
Oh.
Yes, sir. They currently have Head Start in theirs, but they, they had summer camp for youth. They have rooms that are, are used by civic organizations all the time, small businesses come in user. That, that's questions that she can answer most, more specifically for you. That's why I'm having her come.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I do want to state that I, I think it's a, a very good move for the community in that area. I've had some concerns, citizens in that area that have approached me with those questions. I think it's a very small cost at $313,000 for what we can get out of the pieces. I just want to make sure we can get some assurances that they've asked questions of, ready for that movement so that it's not a negative imprint later on.
That's perfectly, perfectly appropriate to ask those questions and have all questions answered going forward. Any other questions on that resolution? I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Gully. I'll do a second class.
When this is turned over to 501(c)(3), will the county still own it or will they own it?
They would own it. The 501(c)(3), ownership would go to the 501(c)(3).
Okay. So basically we'll be paying $313,900 for someone else to own this building?
I don't know that I exactly look at it that way. It would be, it, yeah, it would be an investment in, in the community. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Of course, if the county wanted to keep it, good. Yes, sir.
I can't even remember how many years ago, I've been on here now, going on 24, sometime or another that we used to home, keep the building up and the alumni took over of it, whatever happened to the alumni that was taking care of the building.
And I think they've reached a point that they, they realize that, that the magnitude of keeping the property up is, is more than they can, can really handle. I, I think that the way, it is an investment in the community and the ownership would be with the 501(c)(3). Any other questions on that ordinance? Again, we'll have, we'll have Mrs. Sullivan here on Monday night to answer any other questions. We're moving on to ordinance 305-202405, which would be rezoning from R2 to R3. That's page 36 in your packet, I think. Will Mr. Thomas be here to discuss that?
Rosalie.
Rosalie will be here to discuss that ordinance. Under budget amendments, yes, ma'am?
Now we have added ordinances.
Now I have added ordinances. Where are they?
I'm sorry, they're under yours.
Let me find out where we are. That's the one we talked about first.
Mr. Gully, you want to talk about those?
I certainly can. The added ordinances all come on the fact that we are now ready with Finance Committee to present a favorable budget. I can tell you, I appreciate the work that the Finance Members went through in the time of going through that budget, literally line item by line item. I greatly appreciate those members of the Commission that chose to show for many of those meetings and sit through some pretty lengthy times. You know, there, what's been presented to you here in this case tonight was voted on favorable from the Finance Committee to send the first ordinance here, the 2024. I don't know the number on the end of that one, to be honest with you, is to set the tax levy at the same tax levy from last year. There is no increase in what has been recommended tax levy wise. It is staying at the $1.9877 if you want to look at it that way, 1.9877, which is last year's tax levy. So there was favorably recommended tonight to leave the tax levy there. Your next ordinance was to issue the budget for the 101 at this, or the general fund if we want to talk about it, and that was approved, the, the 20th July 124 budget, that is your next ordinance, which also came with a favorable recommendation with the COLA raise that was put in place and any steps that were moved inside the, any department chose to move a step on the career plan that we have the, I'm sorry, the term has lost, lost me for our personnel policy. There's a, I apologize, term has left me. So that's the, the next piece you have in front of you. Now the next one here, this would actually be upon Urban Service to discuss. The three members of the Urban Service would vote to set the tax levy and I don't think that has taken place as of yet. So they would vote whether or not they're going to set the tax levy at the rate it was last year of 0.6731. That would only be voted upon by the three members of the Urban Service Committee, which I believe were represented by the three highest vote obtainers in two districts and I, those, Mr. Gregory, I think is chair of that. He can probably tell us more about that information. That's top three vote getters in the Urban Service area. And then the next one would be the Urban Service, the Urban Service Fund funding, that would be voted on by the entirety of the Commission, which has been gone through entirely in the Urban Service Committee. All right, I'm sorry, in the Finance Committee. The 111 fund is pretty much what you're talking about in that piece. So that, that fund has been favorably recommended. All three of these has been favorably recommended by the Finance Committee except the tax levy, which is set by the Urban Service Committee. Is everybody clear there?
Any questions or Mr. Gully on that?
Okay.
Thanks, sir. I'm sorry.
I'd like to have a, maybe a meeting Monday night, about six o'clock before our regular meeting for the Urban Services members to let them look over. I mean, they, they've been some of the budget meetings, but y'all, y'all will be here Monday night at six and look over the Urban Service budget and make sure we're good with that tax levy. Is that appropriate time? I mean, enough time where we can get it in Monday night at six?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gully. Moving on to budget amendments, you, you want to speak to that too?
Again, actually all your budgets amendments that are inside Monday night's agenda, all or none are fund balance draws. So actually they can all be taken together as one whole. If there's any part anybody wants to pull out, we certainly can. The Finance Committee chose to put them together as one whole tonight and favorably recommend them. So they were recommended as a whole tonight from the Finance Committee. If there's anything you want to bring apart or anything you want to talk about, we certainly can. Anything inside here you would wish to have more information on, you're certainly welcome to ask it now and I can either have it for you now or get it for you before Monday night.
Okay. Any questions? Then we'll have notaries and now we'll move on to other business. And Mr. Beller, I think you have an item.
We had had some discussions with regard to Providence Community Center property and, and Mr. Bass is here. He wants to go ahead and speak to that. I know we had some conversations about that previously.
If you would, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you just a minute. I'm David Bass from Carthage as local attorney. I have a client church and client pastor who's interested in developing a church body down here in the church where it's previously operated by the Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Now that church is no longer in existence and we've been speaking with the trustees of the, of the church and the church is across the street from this property. Your property was, I think maybe a community center at one time several years ago. In 19, November of 1995, you sold it to, to the trustees of the Cumberland Presbyterian Church and in that deed, there were two restrictions. One is a buyback or a right to first refusal to, if the church or their successors ever wanted to, to sell the property, they'd have to be offered to the county first to see if they wanted to buy it back. Nothing was said, as often is not the case, about how much it is and so forth. It's just a, a courtesy off, offer back to the people that sold it. The other one had to do with the right to poll, use it as a polling place for as long as the county desired to use it as such. I have no idea of your history about how often that is used or how long it's been since it's been used, but these are the type of things that in, in, in discussing with the church and making the decision going forward, how, how it's treated about what actually is going to be the restrictions of the use, if any, on this property in, in conjunction with the property across the, the road. I assume that you all know where I'm talking about, because I don't, I haven't seen it, but it's on the corner of Carter Cedar Bluff Road and Providence Road. And the, the, the church, before we go forward, I'm, I'm not saying it's going to be a deal killer, but it's certainly, it's something they have to, have to weigh in their decision about whether to, to invest in that property and the, and the church property, which you don't, you're not a part of, but still it looks, they're treating it as a part and parcel of, of being involved in their decision to decide whether to go forward or not. And they want to make sure that there's no strings attached. Now, as a, on a personal note, I'm a, I'm a lawyer for 40 years and I do a lot of real estate and, and there's nothing more frustrating to me as a lawyer to trying to get clean title on a piece of property and know that there's some restrictions that linger. Now, I'm not saying these are necessarily bad in and of itself, but here we're just about 30 years removed and there's no shelf life on the right of refusal in this instrument, but still there might become a time where it's, it's either fish or cut bait. So if, if it's something that, that we can address and, and basically what I'm asking and what we'll be asking is to, to, to do two things. One is relinquish your right or give up the right for a first refusal. And then secondly, if you're not going to use it as a polling place, then, then give that up also. Now, the other side of the coin is, I don't know and I probably should have talked to my pastor client to see if this is something that they could live with and it could very well be, they, they could live with the fact that every so often it is used as a polling place if, if the situation is needed. I'm, I'm sure that the church wants to be a good community leader and a good community steward and, and, and probably would be open to that, but we just want to make sure and clean up the title as much as we can going forward before we make the investment in the decision to go forward and, and combine the usage of those two properties, the church property and this property across the road, to be able to, to make an intelligent decision for the, for the benefit of the church. We've got some issues we've got to work out with the, the church property, which is neither here nor there, but I understand that the church is so old that the deeds were probably destroyed in the fire way back when. We've got to probably get quite title action in, in transferred court to, to make sure that, that the Cumberland trustees are vested with the property and have the ability to transfer it. But we don't want to do that and spend that time, effort and money unless we know going forward, we've got something locked down on the other side of the road on this property. So I've spoken a long time. If, if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to try to do that.
To, is for the Commission to decide on, is to relinquish their right to use the property as a polling place? That's the question for us. Is that correct?
That, and we'd also like to see the, the right of first refusal be extinguished to say, y'all in or out, because we, I, I don't know that that's going to be a deal killer necessarily or not, but because they've existed this long without it, but the same respect, it's just a matter of trying to, to get as clean a title and I think you all could appreciate that going forward, trying to get, trying to, to clear up any, any loose ends on the title as best we can going forward.
So basically two questions for the Commission to decide next week. Is that issue with regard to the right of first refusal and the use as a polling place? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Like I say, I don't think the church is going to be dead set on, on not, not saying can't use the church. I mean, I don't have that property for polling. I, I have no idea of your history. You probably, I think I'm correct in saying that it hasn't been used that way in, in a while, but I don't know that for a fact. I'm, I'm out of my territory, so I don't know, but you can gauge your, your not, your needs and your desires and so forth, but they want to know how they can use that property and, and what limitation would be going forward if in fact, some, some, either one or both of these restrictions stay in place. Let me say this, I will not be here available on Monday night, not that you would need me, but if you, if I, you have a desire for me to have the pastor here, I'll be glad to have him here just to address the matter if, if there's any questions.
We're discussing whether or not that needs to be in form of resolution, but I'll leave that to Mr. Beller to guide us on that. Thank you, Mr. Bass. Yes, sir.
Do we, you, you said you don't know, but could you have the information to this Commission? I, the forethought 30 something years ago to have the need of a polling location may or may not be needed in the years to come. Whether it's been needed in the past is kind of irrelevant to me. It's the fact that the forethought was put into the piece for the need and sometimes we're playing catch-up instead of thinking forward. Do you know, and what my question is, do you know if that is a deal breaker or is there a way that the Commission could continue to work with, as you said, the pastor that you're working with in still having that location retained as a polling location? That, that really is something we need to know.
Well, I can have him here and he can address that on Monday night if that's, if that's your desire, if that would impact your decision. He may say it's no problem and, and honestly, unless they have a specific need for that and that building that's going to require them to renovate and, and cut it up and, you know, it, I can't imagine the church not being forthright to, to say, yes, we want to be a, be helpful, but I'm not going to speak for him or the church because I don't know what their plans are.
Mr. Bass, it'd probably be beneficial to have him here based upon the inquiry of Commissioner Gully.
Okay. Seven o'clock here?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Bass.
It'll be a long night, so have him pack his toothbrush.
Okay. I'll have my toothbrush packed, but I'll be out state. Thank you.
Thank you. Under item B, there'll be an Embry's presentation on Monday night. Art Haskins will be here. He'll have up-to-date information on timeline and how the number of employees that they'll be bringing in when this thing starts will impact the community. So we can look forward to Art's presentation. At that point, we'll ask, are there any public comments or anyone wishes to address the Commission? And And, uh, then we'll be ready to adjourn. Any, any other issues tonight? Anything, sir? Motion, move to adjourn? This motion is not debatable. All in favor? You're dismissed. Thank you.